You got it. Okay. Let's call the meeting to order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you.
We're coordinating progress.
Okay, first item. Oh, thank you. First item of business is approval of the minutes from our workshop, April 25th. So everyone had a chance to read through them. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions, comments, revisions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right. Regular order of business. We have lease agreements for both the highway and the police for the radios that both departments use. And there's no increase in the cost, but you have a, I believe we have the lease agreement. It's literally just an update. What I have in my hand is highway. And so I am just asking for a motion to authorize me to sign these lease agreements. You'll note there's no effective date. And given that the price has been the same for a while. Actually, it says in the body of it, the lease, it's a one-year period. So we will put the one-year date in the bottom. I will ask them if they will extend it to multiple years. May I have? Oh, no, it says 12-month renewal, so it'll be 12 months. May I have a motion to authorize me to sign the lease agreement?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we get into some resolutions. You all should have gotten, this was round two papers that went in your box. First one is an updated appointment list. This would be resolution number 12?
Please double-check it.
Yes, please look closely. This is formally appointing our sewer and water operator as C3ND Environmental Consulting, which is who it's been. It's just making it, updating it for the year. Kim, take a look at the Village Green. Al Corca, I think we're good with the events. Yeah?
There are people on the music subcommittee that are not listed on the list. Do you want me to? I just became aware that they were still meeting for the music. That's Alina and Cecily. Sarah is on the working group, but she doesn't go to the panel.
Why don't we leave this as the events committee? And then those are just sort of folks?
Who volunteer just for the music.
Who are volunteering to be part of the music subcommittee. Okay, great. And then public spaces initiative?
Looks good.
Okay. We have Planet Smart on the other side. And then communications, I know that's correct.
Human relations is correct.
Is correct. Okay. Everybody okay with what you see? Motion to approve resolution number 12 to revise the village appointments.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next one. This is tax levy and warrant for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. This would be resolution number 13, 2013. This is a resolution to formalize what we approved in the budget. And this authorizes, this authorizes the village clerk to receive, to receive these funds. And it also clarifies what the penalties are based on how long, how late you are in your payment. So just to clarify, what we approved in the budget was a property tax levy of $1,401,440. The assessment rule that was established by the Red Hook Assessor for fiscal year June 1, 2024 through May 31, 2025, shows a total assessed valuation of real property in Village Red Hook is $274,226,476. As we discussed in our budget meeting, that is an increase from a year ago. So while the property tax levy went up a little over 2%, as allowed by the tax cap, the assessed value went up more than that. So the actual tax rate went down. And so the tax rate is $5.10744 on each thousand of assessed valuation. If you do the math, the $1.4 million divided by the $274 million does not come out exactly the same as the tax rate. And that is related to, there are some assessed values in here that do not get counted for property tax. If you would like that detail, let me know, and I will get the specifics for you. And so taxes are due in June. And so if you have not paid your taxes by July 1st, starting from July, basically the month of July? Yeah, from July 2nd to July 31st, there will be an additional charge of a 5%. From August 1st to September 3rd, there'll be an additional 6%. Between September 4th and September 30th, there will be an additional 7%. Between October 1st and October 31st, there will be an additional 8%. After that, it goes to the county to be levied, and they handle collection from there. And the county makes us whole, so we know that we will get the $1,004. And the county, as I say, the county handles collection if it's gotten that far. And that's the purpose of this resolution. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the tax levy and warrant for the fiscal year 24, 25?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I just had a question. Is the, are the penalties charged, like say, July ends and so there's 5% added? And then we go into August and say they still agree and so they get charged the 5% and the 6% if they last go through even the months? Or is it just when they pay, we'll see where they are, what month it is to what the penalty is?
That is an excellent question, and I meant to ask that question. Do you know the answer, Jim?
If you don't pay in the time, it adds.
It's additional.
So it's additional. So it's cumulative, in other words.
And this, I have a question. If, Kim, are you done?
Yeah, go for it.
Is this, this isn't changing our policy? Is how it has always been?
It's actually, yeah.
Great.
It's not like the big for discussion, it just is.
Yeah, not new. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Did I hear you done?
Okay. The next resolution, which would be number 14. This is a resolution to re-levy unpaid utility bills and property maintenance. So as of April 30th, 2024, there were delinquent utility accounts, which is both water and sewer, totaling $15,170.12. Of that, $9,728.33 is water and $5,441.79 is sewer. That includes late fees from January, basically the year 2023. And then whereas resolution 4 of 2022 affirms reimbursement for snow removal by the village at the rate of $2 per linear foot if a property owner or occupant neglects to clear the adjoining sidewalk within 24 hours after a snow or ice storm. As per Village Code 165-1, I will say that we don't usually come out in hour 25. It's usually a little longer than that. During 2023-2024 winter season, the village conducted property maintenance in the form of snow removal in the amount of $5,824. Now therefore be resolved that no further payments will be accepted after April 30th, 2024, and any and all unpaid utility accounts and property maintenance will be re-levied onto the 2024-2025 village taxes. May I get a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
We'll go with Kim. Charlie, you want to be second?
Sure.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay. The next item. That was resolution 14. That was resolution. So we're now on resolution 15, which is the budget adjustments. I did want to clarify. Do I have notes? Here we are. So this is a resolution for budget adjustments to the village general water and sewer funds. And just a little clarification, which is included in the resolution, whereas for the general fund, the village board has previously approved using $101,600 of fund balance for the following budget items. Planning contract addition of $10,000 was approved in August. Police software of $11,500 was approved also in August. And then the garbage truck purchase of $80,100 was approved in January. And whereas the village board approved using $29,000 from the highway reserve fund, which is not reflected in these budget adjustments. Just to clarify, what we need to do is we need to have, take the $29,000 that is in the highway reserve, bring it over to the general fund. And that will reimburse the general fund for that amount. And so the, and the current general fund budget reflects a deficit of $20,105.94. What you'll see if you look at the general fund budget adjustments at the bottom, it's a negative $110,494.6. If you add the current fund balance deficit of $20,105.94, that gets you to the $101,600 plus 39. So it's $140,600. And so that is, I just wanted to clarify that that's why it's a negative number, because we had approved that. And so by the next meeting, we should have made the addition of the $29,000. I just didn't put it in because I wasn't sure what one item to put it in. So rather than do it twice, I will do that when we've made the appropriate adjustment. And then for the sewer fund, the sewer fund budget currently reflects a deficit of $10,725. And when I looked at it, it is not due to the capital construction. It is actually due to operations. And so in the fund. Okay, that actually doesn't work, does it? I went the wrong way. Oh, no, sorry, sorry. I knew I got this. It's just all we're showing is an expense. So we are reducing our expenses, which should actually be a plus if you look at it from that standpoint. No increased revenue, but we are reducing our expenses by the $10,725. And that will then make the operation sewer fund budget even. Does that make sense? That's why it's different from under the general fund. It shows a negative. But that's a, the plus side of the additional revenue minus the increase in the expense and in the sewer fund, because there's no revenue. It just shows the expense total. So that's a deduction, a reduction in expenses. And. And that was all I wanted to explain. May I have a motion to approve the budget adjustment resolution? I'll make the motion, actually. And may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any further questions? I know there's an awful lot in here. Many of the items are to reflect actuals. So if you look under general fund, the revenues, for example, under franchises, which is what we receive from Charter or Spectrum, same company. We got our check, so it is what it is. And so that's just adjusting for it. Under LoSAP audit, we're not doing a LoSAP audit this year, so there will be no town revenue. The fire department, town workers' compensation, we've paid that bill, so it's done. The sale of equipment, the sale of the old garbage truck, which was $17,400, was included in this line item. And so I'm just adjusting the budget to show for that. And then the last two items on the revenue side, this is appropriately adjusting for, if you remember, we got a short-term bond in August of $218,000 to pay for the highway, sorry, for the garbage truck. We then paid that off and financed only a long-term finance of $50,000 because we used the $80,000 from the fund balance, $29,000 from the highway reserve, the $17,400 from the sale of equipment. And then something else on that list. Chips, $39,000 in chips. So. And same thing with the expense side. It's mostly, I mean, we're close to the end, so it's mostly reflecting what the final will be. The biggest change is towards the bottom. You've got the debt principal of the garbage leaf truck because that was a short-term loan that came in and went out in the same year. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. There will be more adjustments before we're done with this year. We have a few more weeks of this fiscal year. But this gets us a lot closer, so hopefully the final list won't be too terribly long. Just confirming, the next meeting is our workshop meeting on May 23rd, and our board meeting is June 10th. Before we get into the department and committee reports, I do have a question. Well, no, I'm gonna wait till the end. Sorry. Get you all excited. Oh, yes, I do have one other thing that I would like to do now. The Cooking Hen East project that includes the 12-acre property that is slated for housing and some form of affordable housing. ROPCO is the company that is in discussions with the town for the potential purchase of that property, purchase and development of that property. They are applying for a New York Restore application for the barn. And it is for, to turn it into a commercial use. Currently, our zoning is residential. It's our $20,000 in that area. As you know, and you'll hear more about when Steve gets to his reports, we are proceeding apace with reviewing that zoning. What ROPCO has requested is that the village write a letter. And I will read you the language. And I have reviewed this with our land use attorney and made the appropriate adjustment that we discussed. While the barn currently lies in the R20 residential zoning district and cannot currently operate as a general business, the village is currently updating its code to accommodate mixed-use commercial and multifamily uses at the Red Hook Gateway site. Subject to the proposed development meeting, any requirements of the planning board and zoning board of appeals, the village is in the process of revising its zoning to include, among other things, the possibility of allowing for commercial use of the barn. What I wanted the language to say was that we are working on it and we're working towards that, but we haven't approved that because we do need to go through the formal process and the legal process, and we haven't done that yet. So I wanted to share that with you, and I wanted to ask for a motion to approve the letter from the village with that language.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Want to get a motion, Chris?
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Does the Restore New York, does it mean that it has to be in a business district? Is that, I sort of remember.
If it's going to be a business, it has to, I mean, again, the idea is to do an adaptive reuse of the barn into a commercial.
Yeah.
And I think the general idea is possibly for a farm-to-table restaurant, which would be very logical.
Yeah.
You've got, you've got a farm right there. It's an old barn.
But in the mixed-use district, still, I guess they would.
Mixed-use, meaning that because the plan is to have housing around it with the commercial use in and amongst it. And I believe the specific application that they are doing to restore New York is for, is for the barn.
Something about it having to restore New York, the buildings having to be within a business district? But maybe I might be misreading.
I think it needs to be in a zoning district that allows for it, which is why they need the.
Yeah, that makes sense, but, okay. When is that application due?
Wednesday, May 22nd. So not this week, but next.
I mean, I'm all for the letter. I just was wondering about that.
I have to say, I don't know all the details of Restore New York. I think Restore New York is a lot about revitalizing old buildings.
Yeah, but I think there's something about it being in downtown business areas. So it might require that commercial zoning, which is what they're looking for, which might be.
I mean, it does reference mixed use.
And again, I don't know what currently they're, so.
And if they don't meet it, then they don't get the grant?
Exactly. So I'm all for the letter.
Gotcha. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
That's it. I'm staying.
Okay. All right. Oh, there she is. She is coming. Our illustrious treasurer has snuck in. It is time for the treasurer's report.
Excellent.
I wish I got that reaction every time I entered.
To my board. Here's my treasurer's report for this evening, May 13th, 2024. We'll start with the balances in our accounts as of the last day of April, 4/30/24. Our general fund had $852,112.95. The water fund had $458,156.13. Payroll clearing account, $39,763.60. Our sewer fund, $39,261.38. Hard Scrabble remained unchanged at $3,443.68. Also unchanged, our village green account, The health insurance fund has $12,544.97. And our petty cash is holding steady at $52.93. The following are our reserve checking balances. Fire department, $7,720.51. Police, $17,534, even. The USDA, $142,668.1. Highway, $29,451.54. Snow reserve has $3,369.12. Tower reserve, $18,195.52. Unemployment reserve, $7,217.43. Court, $3,388.75. And the office reserve, $999.10.
Been so close.
So close.
Next digit.
Right to that one. That was done. And our monthly expenses for the month of April were general fund, $219,937.29. Water fund, $26,107.45. Our payroll clearing accounts spent $2,727.10. And the sewer fund expenses were $13,523.68.
Wonderful. Any? Do we have to accept your report? Motion to accept the treasurer's report? So moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer, for getting back. From me? Okay. My reports, please. For the month of April, there were 306 incidents. 176 in the village of Red Hook, 105 in the town of Red Hook, and 25 in the village of Tivoli. There were 99 water tower security checks. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 72. 39 in the village of Red Hook, 29 in the town of Red Hook, and four in the village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were eight in the village of Red Hook, none in the town of Red Hook, and six in the village of Tivoli. And there were nine arrests. There were two in the village of Red Hook, three in the town of Red Hook, and four in the village of Tivoli. And. Yeah. For fire, I have through March. I think I reported on February at the last meeting, so I'm gonna report on March now. In the village, there were a total of 31 incidents. 19 of them were of the EMS type. Seven alarms and smoke alarms, et cetera. There were 10. And then there were two assist service call person in distress. And that made up the village portion. The outside of the village, there were 52. 30 of them were EMS calls. Nine were alarm types. So there was one fire. There was one hazardous condition. And there were seven assistant village service call person in distress. And then there were four good-intent call, has meant release investigation, smoke scare kind of gathering. So through three months, there are a total of 310 incidents. And of those, 108 were in the village. All right. And then the next part, sewer project. Okay. Wait, wait, I have it. Actually, I did one of those. Okay. I will just go through the order in which I wrote them, actually. Regarding insurance, which is our unallocated insurance, which is primarily general liability, auto, et cetera. It is NYMER that we use. It's up for renewal on June 1st. Our insurance brokers, Marshall and Sterling, are working on this, and I should be receiving something shortly. The health insurance switch of plans has occurred. Just as a reminder, we did not switch our provider. It's still CDP HP. And the only thing we did was we shifted to a slightly different plan. The only difference was the level of the deductible. And since the village covers the deductible, it should be advantageous to the village. And I have not heard of any issues associated with that change in plan. Communications note, you haven't missed it. The May newsletter hasn't gone out yet, but there's still many days left in May. Sewer project. Long-term financing is scheduled to close on May 16, which is this week. EFC, which is state agency, is providing the long-term financing at zero interest, which has always been the plan. Part of the transaction on May 16 includes EFC paying off the USDA RD, which is federal. Part of the transaction on May 16th includes EFC paying off the USDA RD, which is federal, $3.6 million loan that we closed on last August. There will be some final interest to pay USD RD in the amount of something less than $18,000, which will be paid out of the capital funds collected in the sewer fund. Once complete, our loan with EFC is for 30 years, with payments due annually on March 18th for $205,430, and that amount stays the same for 30 years. I have worked through most of the details and updates with USDA RD for the December dispersment request. Once finalized, I will prepare the final dispersment request, and that will complete the project. I'm waiting for a response from USDA RD about whether the requested sewer-related items can be purchased using the remaining contingency funds. These are grant funds, so there will be no savings if we cannot use these funds. So hopefully, they grant us the right, the opportunity to use those funds for sewer-related items. Sewer expansion phase two. We are working towards, we had authorized Delaware Engineering to proceed with a, with the project of looking at an expansion, both what would the maximum expansion be for the village, and what should phase two be? Our working group meets every two weeks to continue the process. The grant application is due in mid-June. The proposed map includes three potential development projects, which is Cookingham East, the Ross property, which is right next to Cookingham East, and Anderson Commons, which is off Baxter Road in the southeast quadrant of the village, as well as expanding service to the south of the wastewater treatment plant along Route 9, which would get us to the, to the, what's the word I'm looking for, to the property line of the village, to the village line. And we need to do that in order for the town to have the possibility to hook up to our And then to the west, to include the middle and high schools, and to the east, to include the former Red Hook Electric, and to the southeast, to include the light industrial district, and a good portion of the residential district. The ultimate goal of the sewer project is to cover the whole village. This will be years and years and years in the making. But another important note to make is this map, while we are using it in this grant application, is not fixed. Once we have applied for the grant, any additions will not change the grant amount. So there is actually a benefit to going big, because you can always pull back. The town is simultaneously working through their procedure to establish a sewer district, which they are required to do for the village, in order for the village to provide them with sewer services. Part of the process includes an intermunicipal agreement between the town and the village. A draft agreement is with our village attorney. Once he has reviewed it, I will, I have also reviewed it, there are Friday revisions that need to be made just from my, my reading, but once our town, village attorney has reviewed it, it will be forwarded to the board for review. In order to meet the town's timing for the grant for which they are applying, we do need to approve it at our June meeting, so hopefully all of the dates line up. Next item is the Abraham's Park Task Force. The Abraham's Park Task Force met on April 12th. Amy Perella and Betsy Brower each did a separate sketch of the park, including various elements that have been discussed and have come up in discussions with residents and users of the park. These include parking, a bathroom, stage or amphitheater, picnic pavilion, a natural playground, walking trails. They also include an ice skating rink, which I had said is one of those pipe dreams that I have. We threw one up in my backyard in the city of Poughkeepsie when I was a kid. I don't actually expect us to end up with an ice skating rink in, at Abraham's Park, but a girl can dream.
That'd be great.
Betsy, well, Tivoli also has one, so, you know, it's a little bit of village jealousy there.
But it's not walking distance.
It's not walking distance, that is true. We also don't have a pavilion under which we can put that, said, ice skating rink, which Tivoli does have. Betsy developed a survey to collect more feedback. Just to be clear, this was, many of these elements keep coming back around in discussions with people, and so it was an opportunity just to put a visual to it. It was, it's not intended for public view, it's not intended as, as an actual plan, it was just sort of for our internal, just to give us a visual. Some of us like to sort of look at it, what could that possibly look like? Betsy developed a survey to collect more feedback around park usage. Edits were recommended, and Betsy was going to work on a final version, which she's doing, and she is very grateful to Jim Kavanaugh for her assistance in that. Next step, sort of finalize the survey and distribute it as widely as possible. One of the things on the survey is a question of how far from the park do you live? So rather than are you, do you live in the village or live in the town, it's, it's taking just sort of circles and say, are you in this one or this one, like, how close are you? Which is really relevant in terms of the walkability, how do you get there, that kind of thing. So the next step, sort of finalize the survey and distribute it as widely as possible, continue to work on the parking plan, which is focused on the area off London Avenue. Contact the park planner at Sena Hudson to see what assistance they might be able to provide us. I can tell you that we have been in touch and they have responded, and so hopefully they'll be able to make it to our next meeting. And our next meeting is, the scheduling of that is in works, looks like it'll be the end of May.
If you guys are looking for a flyer design, please.
Awesome. We will, we will, we will get back to you. Okay, and then I think that's all except the library. So my library report, library held their regular board meeting on Thursday, April 18th, in the library, their third-floor conference room at 6:30. They normally hold their meetings the third Thursday of each month at 6:30. Library board members, actually, all library board members were in attendance. President Anna Gregg, Vice President Martha Tepepe, Treasurer Amy Houston, Secretary Sarah Devere, and board members, Leigh Manocka, Gareth Davies, and Donna Shea. Others present were the library director, Alex Geller, and myself. The policy committee reviewed several policy updates, including lending rules, programming, internet access, open meetings, petty cash, and privacy. All were accepted. Strategic Plan Committee, the Strategic Plan Committee has developed a survey around library usage. The survey was reviewed and approved. The library will include it in their May newsletter, have it at the circulation desk, and have it available at Apple Blossom Day. The Finance and Treasurer's Report, the treasurer reported that cash flow is, and I quote, "very good." The balance sheet was reviewed, the treasurer reported that the accountant prefers a reserve of one year of expenses. Current expenses are at 20% of the budget, which is through 25% of the year. Retirement plans for staff were discussed. He discussed two options, one is a simple IRA, and the other is a deferred compensation plan, and that, there will be continued discussion on that. Directors Report, the Director, Alex Geller, reported on foot traffic, program attendance, circulation, and upcoming programs. Friends of the library will start as a board committee. Friends will table at Apple Blossom Day and will be included in the Rotary Directory. I believe for those who attended Apple Blossom Day, this was all held on the lawn of the library, so if you didn't make it south on Route 9, you might not have seen that. Request for bids for construction work will be announced May 1st, with a closing at the end of May. This is for the stucco work on the outside of the building and porch repair. I believe they are planning to bid them both at the same time, though I'm not sure they're both going to be constructed at the same time. The library will table at the Budget Expo, the School District Budget Expo, to share budget information. I will say, at this meeting, there was no discussion of the increase that the library was requesting, so that is not something I can report on from this meeting. A combined meeting of the boards of the Red Hook Public Library and Tivoli Library was discussed, with the idea of a joint retreat, no date set. And in my report, I reference where board documents can be found, there's more detail there. It is on the library website, under the column of Board of Trustees. The link to the board packet is actually embedded in the text towards the bottom of the page, it's not the easiest to find, you have to look, but it is there. The next meeting, I conveniently say, is Thursday, May blank, 2024, I probably should fill that in, which I believe would be the 16th, so it's this week. And the committee meeting schedule is on the library calendar on the website, and that is my report.
Can I make two comments?
You may.
Just that I looked for the survey, and it's not on their website generally, it's within that May newsletter, but it's the only place that I could find it. So I hope that they put it more widely, or do some social media around it, because I think it's important to get the public's input. And then also, at the Red Hook Together meeting, the library talked a bit about digital books being, their digital media being expensive. And I know that they haven't been meeting. Anyway, that was their reasoning at the, at the meeting for the, for their 16, almost $16,000 budget increase, but.
Gotcha, thank you.
Haven't heard anything else. I don't know if the other people went to the Budget Expo and explained more.
Is the, is the newsletter on the library website?
It is.
Okay, so people can go to the library website, look for the May newsletter, and find the survey.
Linked through, yeah, but it's just a little bit hidden, so.
Got it. I will, uh.
If someone wanted to do a story about it and publicize it, that'd be great.
I will also follow up, I will also follow up with the library director and suggest that maybe it could be lifted, you know, higher up in the hierarchy. Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, that's, that's it for me. Deputy Mayor Carroll.
Okay, great. Red Hook Together met on April 11th at Bard College. Attendance was limited to the town of Red Hook, Reddick Central School, Bard College, the Daily Catch, and myself, as a reminder of the time, with the time and location, was sent an hour before the meeting. Attendees shared upcoming programming events. The next Red Hook Together is scheduled for noon on May 9th at the Red Hook High School Performing Arts Atrium. That date falls after this report is due to the village clerk, so I will include that meeting in next month's report. And that's, I, that's what I was referencing about the library, and I will.
Gotcha.
Include more next month. Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee. Biweekly meetings have been taking place at the village hall on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at 8:40 a.m. On April 24th, the owners of the realis, and real estate agent for Roland Lanes spoke to the committee about the hardships they are facing in trying to sell their property. The EDC decided to review the zoning overlay districts, both the scenic corridor or overlay district and the Hudson River National Historic District that apply to the property. They discussed if the committee would like to address zoning for that parcel and other adjacent commercial businesses properties by drafting a letter to the town board, or eventually preparing a recommendation to the town's comprehensive plan task force. On May 8th, the Roland Lanes discussion was tabled. Conversation touched on the many stories covered by the Daily Catch in the past week, as well as asking for clarification on the status of the pond behind the library. I reiterated that the village could only intercede on the public's behalf once public property was under threat of damage. Also discussed was the mega-brain comics joining the village, as well as the transfer in ownership of the Brigitte Restaurant. The next meeting is May 22nd at 8:40 a.m. The Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 p.m. in the village hall conference room. This month's meeting was dedicated to reviewing the budget and goals of the language access project. Village of Red Hook Hard Scrabble and Events Committee. The Events Committee meets on the second Tuesday of each month at 6:00 p.m. at village hall. Our April 9th meeting was discussing upcoming neighbors' nights, May 31st and September 13th, as well as a hard scrabble music festival of progress. Sponsor packets have been sent out to business owners by committee volunteers, and the website has been updated with this year's forms. Hard Scrabble will be on September 14th this year, which is easy to remember because it's 1-4, 2-4, and you can follow social media for updates at facebook.com/hardscrabbleRH and instagram.com/villageofRHevents. Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at 7:00 p.m. in the village hall conference room. May 2nd's meeting was moved to May 8th at 7:00 p.m. due to illness of a member. That date falls after the report is due to the village clerk, so I will include that report on, the report on that meeting in next month's report. We're trying really hard to get everything on time to the village clerk, because she works very hard, so you can hear us all stressing about that. Village of Red Hook Highway Department. Street striping will begin this month. Village brush and yard waste pickup pickups are scheduled for the first full week of every month, pending weather conditions and scheduling. Residents are reminded of the following rules. Place lawn clippings and brush in separate piles. Place piles on the edge of your lawn, not on the sidewalk or in the street. Do not include stumps, branches larger than six inches in diameter, garbage and/or construction debris, as that will not be picked up. Piles should be limited to six feet by six feet by six feet. Consider combining smaller piles with a neighbor to facilitate efficient pickups. Potholes.
Before, yeah, before you go on to potholes, I just want to reiterate that the pickups are once a month, and it's the first full week of the month. And so if you put a pile out on Monday morning and it got picked up, they're not coming back around until the following month. So put everything that you want out there at the beginning of the, at the beginning of the week, and it will be picked up during the week.
You can notify the village of potholes on the village roads by calling the village clerk's office or filling out the report concern form at redhookvillage.org/certain. Please note that the village is not allowed to conduct repairs on state highways. If you would like to report a pothole on a state highway, the village can forward your concern, or you can submit your complaint directly to the New York State DOT by calling 1-800-POTHOLE. Streetlight complaints, if you notice a streetlight out, you may notify Central Hudson directly by going to centralhudson.com/EN/outages, and they have a report, a streetlight form. And I'm just mentioning these because these are questions that people ask, so I think it's helpful to know how to do it. Okay, Scrap Metal Program. The revenue received since the last report was $728. The total revenue for this fiscal year to date is $6,416.70. And since the program's inception in September 2007, donations have yielded a total of $54,294.84.
Reprogram.
Finally, the following amounts have been allocated to the, for the 2024 to 25, the village from New York State DOT. And these are funding programs, the state CHIPS, Consolidated Local Street and Highway Improvement Program, got $58,089.3. Pave NY got $13,834.82. Extreme Winter Recovery got $11,051.50. Paver Potholes got $9,223.22. I don't know how Lori does this. Combined, $92,198.57. And we don't have a rollover from last year because we used it all on repairs. Now that we have received these amounts, we will review them with Supervisor Jake Smith, and I will share what paving projects he proposes for this year's projects, their estimated costs, as well as what will be financed in whole or in part by these funding sources in a future report.
And just to clarify, CHIPS is the one area where we can also use it for equipment, and last year we used a portion of it to buy the garbage truck. The others are all about paving.
Indoor plowing, right?
Probably under extreme winter recovery.
Yeah.
We haven't had that issue in a while, so not a lot of snow to plow these days. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next up is Trustee Lang.
Good evening. Let me start out with materials management. So in the month of April, the village highway department collected 2.38 tons of recycling, which is made up of 0.78 tons of kermingled, 0.61 tons of cardboard and 0.99 tons of paper. The village also collected 3.83 tons of garbage, which was transported to Ucras at a total cost of $498.21, $440.45 in tipping fees and $33.03 in fuel surcharges. And unfortunately, $4.90, which we were charged for contaminated recycling, which is a shame because we were on a good streak of no contaminated recycling. So a reminder to everybody that only appropriate, appropriate and clean recycling items are to be placed in the recycling. Otherwise, we get charged for it and that's unfortunate. Over the course of the month, the village collected $2,547 from sale of garbage tags. Broken down as follows.
I'm missing a sheet. Sorry. I don't know what that was.
Broken down as follows, $1,590 at Village Hall, $600 from Taste Buds and $357 from the Red Hook Public Library, all these places where you can purchase garbage tags. And it turns out, it's not very, it's not simple to get an accurate volume of the garbage that's removed in the Welsh dumpster, I think on a biweekly basis, since nobody's really keeping track of that. And once it leaves us, it gets potentially mixed up with other, other people's garbage.
I think it gets mixed up with the garbage that is collected from the village garbage cans.
Yeah, that's.
When Welsh picks up.
Oh, when Welsh picks up?
Yeah.
Right. Probably make an estimate if, if it's full, what that capacity is.
Right, but I, I think, I mean, it gets taken whether it's full or not.
That's true, yes.
We'll see, maybe we'll figure out a, a way in the future to pin that down. So I also have a monthly water treatment facilities report. So during the month of April, the water treatment facility treated 6,547,116 total gallons. And that is an average of 218,237 gallons per day. So that is, let's see, once again, that's pretty much right in line, if not a little less than this time last year. Also, three bacteriological samples were collected and transported to York Analytical for testing and they all came back absent for coliform and E. coli bacteria. So that's always great. And during the month of April, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite and that comes to an average daily use of 2.4 gallons per day. Okay, so a fairly normal month for water reporting. I also serve as the liaison to the Salkia watershed community. And so the Salkia watershed community met in person at village hall on April 24th to continue discussion of organizational needs and priorities for 2024. And in attendance were representatives from Bard College, Winnicke Land Trust and members of the Red, Red Hook community. And the group was very appreciative of the use of village hall for their meeting and will plan to utilize village hall for most future meetings and those will be on the fourth Wednesday of every month. But it worked out very well. The following issues and interests were discussed as priorities going forward for the community. Residential use of herbicides, pesticides and potential watershed impacts. Engagement on the town of Red Hook sewer discussion. Grandwater sampling is something that the Salkia watershed community has been involved in for a while. The amphibian migration project is a big hit that they help coordinate and get volunteers for. Community science projects and Winnicke Stream Hike are other things that they're gonna try and pull together and spend time on.
Presumably that's a hike next to the stream, not in the stream?
Yeah, yeah, generally.
Just checking. I mean, you know, with way near.
Unless you're sampling for macro and burst bridges.
There you go.
Other areas of interest are the village's sewer discharges. I mean, I think occasionally residents have questions about the sewer discharges or if there's more flow in the stream than usual, they might question what's going on. Usually it's nothing really, it's normal. It's rained a lot, but.
Yes.
It's, they're more than willing to answer questions if they come up. Oh, and yes, they also are interested in, I did mention the lead service line assessment process and inventory that's going on. And I mean, being a water-focused group, that's of interest to them and I'll continue to keep them up to speed on our progress.
Are there any folks in this group who either live in the village or on village water?
Um, I'm not 100% sure, but there may be.
Because we have.
There would be another opportunity.
We have an opportunity for that, they could check and see if they have.
As we want to reach out to all our friends and neighbors and.
Yes.
All the competing members.
There's, there's a, there's a cute little video that actually makes it, it's very straightforward to check and see.
Right.
Your service line.
Yeah, and that's the obvious place to start.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the Salkia watershed community. I also am the village liaison with the community preservation fund community, but that did not meet in the month of April. And I actually reached out to Christine Ains, who's the town liaison to that committee. I emailed her, asked for an update on when the next meeting might be and the current status of the CPF Fund. And I'm still waiting for a reply. I didn't think it was a terribly comfortable place, and I'll try it again.
And this is actually, I realize that between you and me, we didn't, you don't have a report on the WEA projects, so I will just give a, an update on the WEA projects. The first one is upgrading the SCADA control system for our water, for our whole water system. And that is in process. That is currently scheduled to be completed by the middle of June. The next project is replacing the water mains on Cherry and Graves Street. And that project has begun. It's in the very early stages. Material has been delivered. Some things have been lined on the road and some saw cuts have been made, but not, I think more, more work will begin, more in earnest towards the end of this week. The people who live in that area have received, should have received notice. Is it handed to you if you answered the door or it was put on your door? And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call, call the village. We have contact information for the contractor and for the engineer. The engineer is Delaware Engineering and they have a, someone dedicated to the oversight of the project. And then the last project is the tank rehabilitation. That, the tank can't, the SCADA project has to be complete before the tank project can get started. So it's more likely that the tank project will, it certainly won't start until July. But all of these projects should be done by the fall. But that's the latest, the latest update. And just to also clarify for Cherry and Graves, if you're used to taking Cherry as a, as a shortcut, there will be times where you won't be able to do that because the work will be going on during the day. For the people who live there, there will be accommodations and everything will be closed up and dropable by the, after each workday. That's the WEA project. Okay.
I do have one more thing to report on. I know it says on my sheet that there were, there were no water sewer utility bill adjustments for the month of April, but there were two of them, so I should report on those. So these are bill adjustments that were approved by the water department and the mayor. One adjustment is allowed for every five-year period. On April 1st, 16 Cherry Street, Cherry Street, apparently there was a burst pipe and there was a credit to that account. Do I need to actually state the dollar amount? No. And then on the April 10th, 7575 Old Post Road, there was unexplained high water usage, apparently due to a family problem. And so there was a credit to that account as well. I thought these things only came around in the Blue Room and suddenly there's a lot of them.
Well, we only had, recently had a process for it. You guys approved a process for it.
Correct.
But once you've, once you've been approved for one, you, you are not, you're not, it's not available to you for at least 10 years.
Are we tracking the total of how many happen a year? I mean, it can be done through these reports.
Right.
I'm just, it's intriguing to, if it is happening very often, how much.
Before this, before this, we never had, there was never a forgiveness, that I know of, well, in this year.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, because it's a choice that we made as a board to do, whether or not we should know how much it's costing us per budget year, this choice.
We should, I mean, we should.
We should probably do a summary.
We can do a summary.
At the end of the fiscal year and, you know, be able to see going forward.
I mean, I think it's great because, yeah, sometimes.
Well, I think it's gonna be a, really a relatively small amount and a small thing that we can do to help out in particular circumstances.
I think so too.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it, Charlie?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
All right. Onto Trustee Brad in the front.
Okay, Village Month, Village Green Committee. Current balance of the Village Green-related budget accounts at the end of April are as follows. The community beautification for contractual expenses, there were no additional expenses in the month of April, and so the balance remains at $440.3 for shade tree contractual expenses. There were no expenses, which leaves the remaining balance at $11,667.97. And the Village Green Committee checking account is $9,761.63. The Village Green had their annual spring arbor day planting and volunteer luncheon on Saturday, April 13th. And it was a blistering day, but the rain held off and the 15 volunteers that came up were incredibly thankful for the dry yet muddy planting experience. In case you didn't know, the village does have clay-like soil in some area, even though we're known for our, our sandy soils. We do have clay in certain areas. We planted, thank you to the volunteers who came out early Saturday morning. We planted five prairie pink dogwoods, two Whirples, Whirples Dunn sweet gums and one each of the Pink Mist Sergeant Cherry, Thornless Coxspur Hawthorn and Heritage Birch. The ground was surprisingly muddy, sucking at our boots as we stamped in the soil back around the trees. Mold stones were perfected and receiving, residents were given instructions about the gator racks we attached to the trees for watering and later postcards were delivered which linked to tree care instructions, further enabling the best care for the future of these trees. An additional thank you to Michelle Decker of Decker Construction and Dave Pearson for digging and preparing the tree sites, the village highway department for the postplanting watering, Kathy Pearson for organizing the volunteer luncheon, and Brenda Cagle, Betsy Brower and Kay for tagging the trees. I also wanted to thank committee member Brian Ferran for this, his work on the postcard that went out to the residents and Jason Baker for canvassing residents to find tree spots, delivering postcards and his dedicated work on recruiting and educating our villagers about the Village Green Committee and what we can do for you. The Village Green is working to diversify our tree population here in the village and boost our native tree species. And in such, we hope to begin the long process of taking inventory of the trees. Village Green attended a Bard intern fair in hopes of recruiting a Bard student for the summer. And if funding goes through, we may have some help. This will take much efforts, but the payoff will be much better for the environment and future of our green canopy. As always, we are looking for more people to join our efforts. There are many opportunities to volunteer, whether directly helping with the inventory project to mediographics, workshop development and education materials for our residents. If you're interested in learning more about tree diversity and how that affects the health of the village, please reach out. Residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent village street or New York State highway right-of-way, volunteering for planting days or sponsoring a beautification project, you can contact myself or Jen Cavanaugh, the village clerk. And meetings are open to the public and we're actively seeking members of our community to join. So please reach out if you're interested in joining for the next meeting.
Just a quick clarification. You mentioned the Bard student for the summer, if funding, if funding goes through.
She was applying for.
Is that the Bard funding?
Yeah, Bard funding, not village funding.
Thank you.
She was applying for a community action project, I believe.
Great.
For the sewer department, as Mayor Smy said, we continue to work with the village engineer on planning of the expansion with Phase 2. And as a reminder to all residents, whether you're in the sewer use area or not, please be kind to your pipes. Please only put the three Ps in the toilet. Pee, poop and paper while in the kitchen or near other drains. Please don't disperse any fats, oils or grease, otherwise known as fog, as they can clog up the pipes and make the system stressed. What goes down the drain matters. And if you are in the sewer use area and the emergency alarm goes off, call the village sewer operator at 845-758-1081 and press option 8. Silence the alarm only after notifying the sewer operator. Otherwise, we won't know the alarm is going off. Please do not open the box or tamper with village-owned equipment. For the Village Speed Limit Initiative for April, we received an initial draft of the speed limit, the engineer report that covered data retrieved from village streets. And this is just one step in a multi-step process. However, at initial analysis, Creighton Manning, our engineer for this project, recommends that Village of Red Hook to enact an area-wide speed limit of 25 miles an hour. And at this moment, it does not include state or county roads such as Route New York 199, New York 9 or Linden Avenue. And we are waiting future reports regarding state and county data, as well as the report for the school zone. For the Towns Red Hook Greenway and Trails Committee, they met in April and covered trail updates, the state of the trailblazers and a potential fence on the red trail behind Linden Acres. There is a decent part of the meeting dedicated to discussing the location of a bridge at Cooking Ham West, which would connect trails to the Red Park. And additionally, the Greenway and Trails Committee, along with Winnicke Land Trust, have been invited to present at Red Hook Rotary at their June 11th meeting. And June 1st is National Trails Day. Get out and work the trails if you are interested. Winnicke's going to have many projects available. You can look to the Greenway Trails Committee or Winnicke Land Trust about information on specific locations for trail work that day. The Climate Smart Communities, the task force met for the first time and were able to, we were off to a jubilant start. Lots of interest in moving forward with an understanding that there may be more tedious work ahead of us as we move to look into mapping our greenhouse gas emissions. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 15th at 5:30 at Village Hall, second floor conference room. The task force is open and still recruiting members. So if you are interested in being involved and to express ideas and knowledge of the way to best move forward in working within the team setting to build the pathway forward, we are interested in your input. Thank you. And that's it for me.
Thank you. And now on to Trustee Abenzel.
Good evening. For the Village of Red Hook Building Department, it was an active month. There were 14 building permits issued, one certificate of occupancy was issued, and there were two certificates of compliance and four municipal searches. Orders to remedy, there were eight. One at 56 East Market Street, which is still open. Actually, all these orders to remedy are still open. One at 28 Garden Street, another one at 7578 North Broadway, one at 51 Elizabeth Street, one at 15 Eldridge Lane, South Broadway, 72 West Market Street and 98 West Market Street. Related to that is a stop work order at 56 East Market Street. And there was a notice of violation at 50 East Market Street, which was related to construction without a building permit for Airbnb use. There were no do not occupy notices, no court appearances and no fire inspections. There were nine complaints, which again, many of those related to the orders to remedy. One at 56 East Market Street, that was construction in an incinerator without. That was construction in an incinerator without a building permit. For Cherry Street, fire escape inspection. 15 Eldridge Lane, there was a shipping container on the property. 7578 North Broadway, there were two shipping containers on the property. Being the month for shipping containers, there was also one at 51 Elizabeth Street. 59-61 East Market Street, there were ADA issues. South Broadway, there was a signage issue. The signage issue also was noted at 72 West Market Street and 98 West Market Street. No fire inspections took place during the month of April. And for the activity that was noted on the report, there was $2,750 of fee revenue received.
Turn your page over.
Oh, thank you. Yes, there was... For the planning board, this was a very active meeting. On April 11th, there was a site plan application for Firehouse Lane that was withdrawn. There was a site plan approval granted for 59 Fisk Street for the Red Hook Community Center. The site plan was also granted for a property located at 46 West Market Street, the future site of Catalina's Italian Deli. Site plan and public hearing for a property located at 49 West Market Street has been tabled to the upcoming May 16th meeting. And the site plan and public hearing for property located at 7385 North Broadway also tabled for this week's upcoming meeting. And notice was sent for the originally scheduled board meeting on the 9th to be rescheduled for the 16th at 6:30 p.m., and that will be here in this courtroom. Zoning Board of Appeals had a meeting on April 25th, and there was an area variance for property located at 52 West Market Street, and that's been tabled for the May 23rd meeting. And a public hearing has been set for that time. And the report for the Public Spaces Initiative. And just as a reminder, the Public Spaces Initiative's mission is to develop and facilitate creation of public parks, art, community spaces throughout the Village of Red Hook. And public meetings are held the fourth Saturday of each month at 10 a.m. in person here at Village Hall, unless otherwise noted. The fourth meeting of the year was held Saturday, May 4th at Village Hall. Key topics included the seed library, which is currently hosted at the Red Hook Community Center. And work is underway with the community center leadership relocating the library from the basement to a more prominent location on the first floor. Concurrent with that planned move will be a redesign of the library, installing new signage and otherwise making it more accessible and attractive. And ideally, the move will be completed by June 15th, which is the date for the Hello Blooms event to be held at the Red Hook Community Center. And we'll touch upon that event in just a moment. As far as Abraham's Park, as the mayor reported, there's ongoing redesign vision and work underway. And a survey that is also in development to capture public input. And as part of the things that go on in Abraham's Park, the Public Space Initiative group has reached out to Bard College to initiate conversations on a possible collaboration for a studio art program, outdoor exhibit, to be held likely sometime in the fall if it goes forward. And some of the work for the PSI revolves around pollinators and all the many benefits that they provide. The Village of Red Hook page is live on the Pollinator Pathway website, which is www.pollinator-pathway.org/towns/red-hook. And there's a lot of great information on there. There's also work underway developing a brochure highlighting the benefits of pollinator gardens and highlighting some of the current gardens that exist in Red Hook. And the PSI would like to work on designing a pollinator garden either in front of Village Hall or by the to-be-relocated bus stop once that work is ready to proceed and move forward. Also discussed at the meeting were a lot of upcoming events. Apple Blossom Day, which was this past Saturday. PSI tabled there. Shared pollinator garden information was there, providing what I'm sure was much wealth gardening advice and distributing seeds to folks who were interested. The next event is coming up on June 1st at Historic Red Hook. It's the Then and Now event. And that is particularly relevant for public spaces because the theme for this year is farms, food, and family. And PSI will be tabling at that event. And prior to the event, PSI volunteers will work on sprucing up the pollinator garden installed last year at the Elmendorf. And as mentioned previously, the Hello Blooms event, which will be taking place June 15th at the Red Hook Community Center in partnership with them, will have a lot of great activities, including plant giveaways, informational tables, painting and pot decorating for kids, music and tours of the community center's pollinator garden, and hopefully by that time, relocated seed library. The bulk of the activities will be outdoors, weather permitting. But the community center is an ideal venue inside the event of rain, which is what we did last year. And finally, we didn't go into any details, but the October 19th Pumpkins in the Park event is an upcoming event, and more work will be on that as we move closer to that date.
Steve, can I ask you some questions?
Sure.
Okay, so the seed library, is the village paying any money into this seed library?
No.
Okay.
Any costs for relocating it or materials are going to be coming from the community center.
Okay, so it's actually, okay. And then the Hello Blooms, have you guys done a theme that fits in the public purpose that we discussed?
I believe that the theme is just, you know, trying to kind of congruent with what the PSI's overall mission is, which is, you know, having enhanced public spaces, you know, and the benefit of having pollinator gardens in private properties. I think that are improving the look of the village is kind of falls into that theme.
Okay, as a trustee, I find it a little troublesome to be advising private homeowners on what they should be doing. I mean, if we're doing public park spaces, that makes sense, but I don't... And then the brochure that you guys are doing. That is a brochure highlighting the benefit of pollinator gardens in private property?
It's just in general. I haven't seen a draft of what would be put together for that. But again, just encouraging use of pollinator gardens. And many of those, you know, would be on private property. But again, there's no cost really involved with putting together a brochure.
There is for printing.
Yeah, for printing, yes.
Just, I feel like we had a conversation when we increased the budget about really being clear about the public purpose. Because if you guys are increasing your budget, it really has to be... And it just seems like that conversation has been completely ignored. Anyway, okay.
Well, I mean, most of the budget is for the events, you know, the cost for these other things. But the point is well taken, and we'll discuss that at the next meeting.
Because, you know, we have an events committee. It's expensive. We're paying, you know, it is a village fund. It should really be clear that we're doing legally, you know, public purpose. And that's why it was brought up in the meeting, because it's important. So just, you know.
May I interject? I will say, like, based on conversations I know, some of it does the sort of public purposes about, like, for the pollinators, is it's beneficial to the village in itself because it helps our ecosystem. So educating the public is not necessarily, from the conversations I've had with other of the other, like, committee members, is not about telling private homeowners to have pollinator gardens, but more providing education about the impact of pollinators, and which then aligns with what Climate Smart Committee is doing in some of that stuff. And so...
If they partnered with you, that would totally make sense. But they're not saying they're partnering with you. It's really important that it is promoting, you know, government work. That is the purpose. So, yeah.
So I see that as an opportunity. I think as the Climate Smart Community gets going, it can help to focus the communication around...
Which I think is great, yeah.
...broader ideas.
It's just really important, working with public funds, that we do it correctly and that we respect the process.
No, appreciate that. And that's something that's just commented during the meetings, and we'll revisit that and further refine the focus on.
Great, thank you.
And the last item on the report is an update on planning. On April 30th, the mayor and I had a Zoom meeting with Bonnie Franzen from the firm of Nelson Pope and Voorhees. They are working with the village, providing support for the Village Gateway Cooking Ham East project. We had a working session reviewing a preliminary draft of NPV's land use and zoning study. And NPV is going to incorporate feedback from that meeting. And they will further augment that report. And the goal is having a draft for an in-person meeting once that's available with the full project task force.
So to that end, we had talked about having a meeting on May 23rd at 5:00 p.m. And I think it would be best served to have that meeting here in the courtroom. The issue is that the zoning board does have a meeting that night at 6:30. So if we could do that meeting, we think an hour and 15 minutes is enough. I want to make it a public meeting so all of the board members can come. We could also... I know that we're going to have work to do in our workshop, so I hesitate to make that the entire subject of our workshop. We could, however, do our workshop and maybe be efficient and get our work done in half an hour and then have the meeting at 7:30. And we could be down here because the zoning board anticipates they will be done, well done by then. Thoughts on timing? What do you think, Steve?
You know, I think if the report is available by that joint, that, and we talked about having it tentatively on that slot before, it makes good sense.
At 5:00?
Yeah.
We just have to be done, sort of, to allow for the zoning board. Their meeting starts at 6:30, so we have to be done at 6:20.
The 5:00 p.m. is with the planner?
Yes, the planner's planning to come.
And then we can still discuss it at the workshop if we have continued thing with the planner. Will it be there?
Yes, that's correct.
Can the planner attend the workshop meeting, or is, are they...
I guess in my head, when we were discussing it, I was thinking of separating it. And so that's why we ended up, I could certainly get back to her and say, can you come at 7:30 instead? Or were you thinking in addition to?
I think either work, I mean, I'm sure we don't have questions beyond an hour. We can always, if we still have discussion, we can have it in the workshop without her, right?
I think so, yes. And this is only the first of many meetings, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's still public?
Yes. Anybody else have any thoughts? No. So I'm inclined to have it at 5:00. And so we just need to notice that meeting.
Can you make a motion to have a special meeting at a certain time?
I would like to make a motion to have a special meeting to review the planning, land use, and zoning study on May 23rd at 5:00 p.m. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further details required? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Super. I will say, this is... The best part about having professionals do this is it starts out, the report starts out with an overview of what is. And that's really helpful, and history, and... So I think it'll be an interesting discussion and an opportunity for us, but also those who are interested. We do have a tentative working group that we haven't gotten together yet that we will be inviting specifically, that the public will be welcome to attend. Okay, is that it for you?
Yes, that's it.
Mr. Appenzeller? Anybody else have any other general business? No? Public comment? Anyone online? We do, I do have just some updates regarding our contract negotiations for executive session. I do not expect, do not anticipate any business upon our return, which means I need to get a motion to pay bills after audit.
So who?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Still not.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now, we're headed to executive session. Because we're not anticipating anything further, you can shut it all down.